Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Worcester School Committee. We're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The National Anthem is going to be sung by singing the arrangement of the National Anthem by Nayli Roman tonight, Destiny Pratt, Colin Roman Torres, and Natalie Roman from Burncote High School. Okay, we'll do the pledge first.
Aye. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, one God, and one God. Justice, law, and
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Very nice job, Burncote High School. Oh, it said Burncote on there. Oh, from Dougherty High School. So, nice job and much appreciated. Okay, we are going to do a roll call.
Member Alvarez.
Present.
Member Biancaria.
Here.
Member Benenda.
Here.
Member Guardiola.
Here.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Here.
Member Mailman.
Here.
Member McCullough.
Here.
Member Roy.
Here.
Mayor Petty.
Here. We are M student advisory committee items to consider a variety of strategies that will improve communication amongst the students and teachers, which can include the suggestion blocks and mandatory meetings that will provide a sense of comfort and understanding in a classroom setting. So, just introduce yourself and the school you're from, man.
Thomas Sutton from Burncote High. Through the chair, students really like, really feel like establishing a relationship with their teachers is really important. And some students struggle communicating with their teachers for a bunch of different reasons. We would like you to consider various strategies to improve the communications between students and their teachers so that we can become effective communicators. A couple of our ideas include suggestion boxes, meeting during class that is conducted in a manner that provides students an opportunity to share their ideas about the class. This could be like a circle practice or a Socratic seminar, and generic surveys at interims that all middle school and high school students take that provide the teachers direct feedback.
Okay. On set. Administration? Not the subcommittee. Do you want that, administration?
Through the chair. I recommend referring to administration and then we'll work with the superintendent student advisory and then we can bring something back.
Okay, perfect. Now, those in favor, opposed, or ordered. We have the consent agenda. I think it's on a roll call. Roll call.
Member Alvarez.
Yes.
Member Biancaria.
Yes.
Member Benenda.
Yes.
Member Guardiola.
Yes.
Member Johnson.
Yes.
Member Mailman.
Yes.
Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
Yes. That brings us to public comment. Anybody want to speak on anything tonight? Seeing nobody. That brings us to the report of the superintendent. Family and Community Engagement Framework Implementation Update. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, through the chair. So, as the team comes up to do the presentation, I want to welcome Dr. Koo. We have our two directors of family and community engagement, Dr. Gonzalez, it's Casey Starr. And then we're going to hear from some voices from the field. We've got a parent, we've got one of our wraparound coordinators, and we've got a community member who we partner with. And the establishment of the Family and Community Engagement Office was an direct out development out of the Listening and Learning Tour that I took on last school year. And when I looked at, really, how do we ensure that there's a tight link between our community, our families, and our schools? And who takes the lead in that? There was a missing hole. And so, we established this department. And then, we were able to rework an existing position that vacated to actually have two individuals where we were very happy to put these two co-directors in place. They have hit the ground running. The department's only been up for one year, and they are now working directly with our wraparound coordinators at every school. So, the school committee really has invested resources to support family and community engagement. We know in education, it is a partnership. We talk about it all the time. We talk about the engagement of our parents and the connection between our parents, caregivers, educators, and the children, and that all of those need to be in place. So, very happy to have this office now in existence in Worcester Public Schools, and I'm grateful for the team who is leading that. The next slide makes a connection to how this links to where we're going as a district in Worcester Public Schools. Who's forwarding the slides? Oh, sorry, Casey, I apologize. So, and you'll see this over and over again, committee. Specifically, everything aligns. Now, we have an approved strategic plan. So, we have strategic plan to my goals for this school year that you will be evaluating me on at the end of the school year. And then, that connects to our school growth plans where family and community engagement framework fits in is in the strategic plan. Last school year, we developed this framework, and this year is how we're starting to implement it. And we're really, I like to say, at the, probably the toddler stages. We're beyond infancy. But you'll hear tonight what we've been doing and the roadmap that we've had and where we plan on going. So, with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Koo. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. We are excited to share with you and take you on a little road trip, as you can see in a moment, as to the work that we've done already and the work that we are very excited to continue to do. So, our expected outcomes for today are very simple. It's to provide you an overview for current and desired states for our family and community engagement, and then, an overview of the actual family and community engagement framework. And really, again, you'll hear from folks who are in the field to see what this actually looks like as we're starting this work.
Thank you. Again, my name is Casey Starr. I'm so excited to be here with you all tonight and have this opportunity to connect as well as in this new role. So, as you could see, oh, thanks, Casey. As you could see, the principles listed above, in many ways, the principles listed here are really values through which the Office of Family and Community Engagement undertakes this work. As we talk about fostering authentic partnerships, you know, our office, we believe in authentic, collaborative, intentional partnerships between schools, families, and community partners that allows for regular communication, shared decision-making, and shared responsibility for student success. Promoting inclusivity and accessibility. Again, the Office of Family and Community Engagement is committed to inclusivity and accessibility in all of our work, ensuring our practices and approaches are inclusive and remove as many barriers as possible to participation for all families. Celebrating diversity and honoring families' knowledge, you know, again, an important value that drives our work is recognizing and honoring families' identities, experiences, and expertise. Our families have so much to offer, and ensuring that our approach values their experiences and identities key, and that we fostered an environment where differences are celebrated and embraced. Strengthen family and community engagement, of course. Our work is focused on strengthening and supporting family and community engagement across the district. That's really what drives all of our work and is directly related to the bullet below around supporting scholar's success. Studies continue to show when family engagement is directly tied to student's success, when families are engaged as partners in their students' education, students do better.
Okay, so, let's go on a little bit of a road trip. So, when we talk about current state, we actually had a lot of conversation that we've done a lot of work in this past year, and it was really important to showcase that. So, we thought we would all go on a road trip and kind of see how we got to this point. So, last July through December, when the superintendent started, she embarked on a series of listening and learning tours, and the community was very, very clear in that we needed more supports around family and community engagement. So, that was a theme that emerged from many, many of those listening and learning tours. So, that's where we started. So, then, from there, I just want to draw attention to the fact that the bus is moving along with us. So, from there, in December that year, we looked at what the community said they needed. And again, this was a theme that emerged. So, we develop a family and community engagement position, and due to resignations at the time and shifts in positions, we thought, what a great opportunity to expand a department that the community clearly said they really, really needed. So, from there, we develop systems to begin interviewing and looking for candidates. So, in February, we actually were very fortunate, again, due to shifts in personnel, we were able to effectively hire two family and community engagement directors to lead this work, which has been fantastic because the work is so broad. When people say family and community engagement, it is just beyond engaging families. It's about really making sure that we see the community and families as equal partners in the work that we do for our scholars. So, that's where the work started. We were able to find two phenomenal folks who are sitting here with me today. And as they started work in late February, early March, there you go, waiting for my bus to move, they started hitting the ground running. They did a full assessment of all current existing systems that we had, but also taken a deep dive into best practices, benchmarking from around communities such as ours to see what's working, what does the research say, so that everything we do is grounded in research, and not to do it just because we've been doing it. But immediately, they started a new process for translation interpretation, looking at that, how do we really capitalize on systems that we had to support our families so they felt connected to the work that we were doing. From there, we started our first superintendent roundtable. It was established at that time, we've had three so far, the goal is to have one every quarter, and this is an opportunity where the superintendent gets to meet with the community and really talk about the issues that families and the community feel are important to them. So, that was the first of the many that we were starting. And then, in June of that year, as you recall, the school committee actually adopted the FACE framework, the Family and Community Engagement framework that we will talk to you more about today. From there, we decided that it was really important to make sure that for this work to really hold and be sustainable, we needed to make sure that we had people dedicated to doing this work. So, we made a commitment, and when I say we, I mean the school committee and all of us here, made a commitment that we had to have wraparound support every single school site. So, we did that. Last year, we added a total of 47, one at every single school, as well as a parent information center. That summer, and again, I'm just giving you a highlight on this road trip, as you know, with many road trips, we, there's a lot to see, so just giving you some highlights. In July and August of that year, we actually hired some culture brokers. We were able to keep two of the four that we had hired to work with the families. But I think if you asked Deborah and Casey, they were very, very proud of the Family Academy that happened that year, where we brought families together and really, really did some learning, right? Listening and learning on lots of different topics with families along with staff. So, we had a very successful, and I want to say, did we say about 200? Around 200 families participated. So, really great numbers. So, school started in September. So, in order for this work to be sustainable, we had to train the people at the school site. So, that's when the professional development started for the wraparound coordinators, right in September. As we continue this journey, in October of this past year, we continue to share the FACE framework with all of our school leaders. So, we are working with the folks who are doing this work, who are leading this work, but we also want to make sure that all of our leaders understand the work and the work that's happening. So, that happened this past year. It was shared with all the school leaders, there's conversations about what this looked like, asked for feedback, and so on and so forth. So, it felt like a year ago, but this past November, we really looked at, how do we streamline all of our student enrollment processes? How do we make sure that it's accessible to all of our families? So, we revamped and streamlined our process this past November. And then, as you can see, we're now in February. We've done a lot of work, and that's sort of our current state. That's how we got to where we are now. So, we've done a lot of benchmarking, we've done a lot of researching, we've done a lot of auditing and just looking at what we have, what we need, and how do we, we talk about vision of a learner, we talk about future-ready. We also want to be future-ready with our families and really think about how best we can, what we can do to best impact the partnership that we have with community and with our families. So, with that, that is where our current state is, and now, you're going to hear from Deborah and Casey about all of the work that we are in the middle of and we're continuing to do.
So, again, can you hear me?
Yes. That's a button.
Okay. Now, you can hear me. I'm Deborah Gonzalez, and I am very grateful for the opportunity to share with you the work that we have been doing and continue doing, and what a remarkable productive year for us, the Family and Community Engagement Office. I feel we have, you know, had a great year. Today, we actually commemorate the first anniversary of the inception of this new office within the district. And as we reflect in our journey, we are committed to integrating systems. And Casey's going to start with the first one.
Thank you. And Dr. Koo had already previously mentioned it, but the first one we really want to highlight is the quarterly superintendent Family and Community Engagement Roundtable. These really serve as a forum in which families and community partners can come together to provide feedback and input into district initiatives and priorities. Family representatives from each school across the district are invited along with community partners, and these are not designed to just be us reporting information to people. These are really designed to be more engaging workshops with discussions and collaborative exercise designed for partnership.
Our next system is related to supporting the implementation of two-way communication systems. The Family and Community Engagement Office is backing the work of the Communications Department in implementing and delving into functionalities of Parent Square as a communication platform. We support our wraparound coordinators in cultivating channels for engaging with families, gathering their insights on their needs, and disseminating information about the school's resources and opportunities for children's and families. Similarly, in collaboration with community partners and the families they support, we are establishing frameworks to facilitate reciprocal communication with our community partners and stakeholders. And as a best practice, as Dr. Koo was mentioning with regards to the Family Academy, this is based on a research model that has been very successful in the past in Worcester, and we're very excited of continuing this type of opportunity for our families. They can address any content area, but one that we aim to consistently organize annually is preparing families and instilling excitement for their children's new school year. For instance, like Dr. Koo mentioned, last August, we hosted a gathering at Woodland Academy for over 200 newly immigrated families who primarily spoke Haitian Creole, Portuguese, Dari Pashto, and Spanish. The event focused on familiarizing families with the importance of attendance, navigating the student handbook, assisting with homework, and other topics essential for navigating the Worcester Public School systems, crucial to their children's academic and social emotional well-being. We removed barriers by providing food, childcare, and transportation, ensuring each family felt included. We celebrated diversity by offering cuisine from each represented country. Additionally, we distributed school supplies to their children and provided interpreting and cultural broker assistance to ensure equitable participation. We aim to establish this as a regular practice, empowering families with knowledge on any topic that promotes their scholar's success.
For systemic and persistent professional development for wraparound coordinators, we've implemented regular professional development opportunities for our wraparound coordinators as well as a regular meeting schedule. So far, these have included presentations by community partners on resources for families, review of application processes for different benefits and resources, sessions around the family and community engagement framework, and opportunities to share expertise and learn from one another. We even recently just started weekly virtual office hours for wraps to drop in as needed to ask questions, troubleshoot any challenges, or even celebrate successes. As Dr. Koo mentioned previously, we also undertook a review of existing enrollment processes last year, and this school year, we began implementing new systems. Much of this has really been focused on increased efficiency for staff and improved experiences for families. You know, we considerably, we talk often about being future-ready, and we need to be future-ready in our administrative offices as well. And for a lot of that, that's transitioning away from paper towards virtual and electronic versions. We've also added a wraparound coordinator to the parent information system, which has just been a game changer. It has been a remarkable system that's been able to be created in which we could provide immediate support to families that come in with, sometimes with great need, to the parent information center, and then, that wraparound coordinator is doing what we call a soft handoff to the appropriate wraps at the schools the students are going to.
And as we exemplified for the summer offering of the Family Academies, we're prioritizing access for all families. In managing the Interpretation and Translations Department, our priority is facilitating communication in our seven required languages and those spoken by new immigrant families enrolling in our district. Additionally, we coordinate childcare, provide meals, and arrange transportation for family engagement whenever possible to ensure inclusivity and accessibility. Ensuring access for all families extends to our efforts to promote equitable access to resources, services, and programs through community partners regardless of their school. And our primary objective is to eliminate barriers that might hinder families' participation in our initiatives. Ultimately, we aim to foster an environment where each family feels welcomed, valued, and empowered to actively participate in their children's education and the broader school community. We also want to support robust community partnerships. Our Family and Community Engagement Office aims to forge strong community partnerships that prioritize clarity in agreements, equity in opportunities across all schools, and consistency through a systematic approach to engaging with community partners. We aim to create transparent and easily understandable partnerships with all stakeholders, guaranteeing that information and resources are readily available to everyone.
And lastly, on systems, we're really talking about the alignment of school and district-based family engagement efforts. You know, one of the first obvious things as soon as we came into our positions was that there's just like wonderful engagement already happening in pockets throughout the district, at schools, at our district offices, but really needed an opportunity to connect to a larger structure to be able to connect together. And so, we're working to create systems that develop stronger connections between the engagement efforts happening at our school and the work at the district level, and really creating structures that encourage deliberate coordination and collaboration between the two. Thanks, Casey. Awesome. We're now going to move on to the Family and Community Engagement Framework, which was recently adopted by the district at the end of last school year. The Family and Community Engagement Framework is a crucial component to the district's strategic plan and provides a blueprint of our priorities of work as well as our desired states of engagement. As you could see on the left of the infographic, our framework is rooted in the belief that family, schools, and community are stakeholders in student's success and requires an intentional and collaborative partnership. The three categories written in purple inside the half-circle are priority areas through which we focus our work. Improving communication is a key strategy for engagement, as highlighted both in our framework as well as a goal in the district's strategic plan. Strong communication practices are a critical component to successful family and community engagement initiatives and demonstrates to families and community partners that the district values their involvement and we're committed to working collaboratively. Building capacity. When we talk about building capacity, we're really talking about parallel efforts to build capacity of both our families and our schools to partner together to support student's success. This idea was really coined by Dr. Karen Map, and is considered, I would argue, not just a best practice, but really a necessity in order to make impactful change. And lastly, on strengthening relationships, you know, in order to collaborate as partners in our work, we really, there needs to be intentional efforts focusing on strengthening relationships and building authentic trust-based relationships between schools, families, and community partners.
And at the right-hand side of the infographic, it illustrates the types of initiatives categorized within the buckets of work aiming to achieve the outcomes outlined in the FACE framework. They include initiatives to ensure we have empowered caregivers, because parents are their children's primary and most effective champions. They should be able to actively collaborate and participate in their children's education decision-making. When empowered as equal partners, parents are better equipped to support their children's academic aspirations and overall welfare fully. These initiatives align swiftly with Aim Two of Worcester Public School's new strategic plan, which emphasizes cultivating an inclusive culture to empower caregivers. Then, we have as another bucket of work initiatives to ensure we provide our families and communities with welcome environment, welcoming environments. Educational institutions should establish atmospheres that embrace and include all families. This entails a physical setting, interactions with staff, and the supported systems in operation. When families experience a sense of belonging and investment in their children's school, it deals benefits for family, students, and community. These initiatives also align with Aim One, Goal One in our strategic plan as they prioritize ensuring that all families feel welcome, included, and have a strong sense of belonging. Finally, we have the bucket of work that includes initiatives to intentionally ensure our community, families, and schools work in unison to build strong partnerships. Effective collaboration among Worcester Public Schools' families and community partners play a crucial role in enhancing academic achievements and linking families to resources and assistance. Through purposeful and cooperative partnerships, every child can access a well-rounded educational journey tailored to their requirements and ambitions. These initiatives are synchronized with our strategic plan, Aim Three, which involves leveraging community partnerships to provide equitable access to community resources, services, and programs.
Now, we just wanted to take an opportunity to welcome some voices from the field. Oh, Sandra, you're still here. Come on, Sandra, you go up first. Thank you. You just introduce yourself briefly, please.
Hello? Okay, can you hear me? No? Hello? Okay. I totally forgot my glasses, so. Okay. If anyone has a plus-one, that's all. Do you have a plus-one? Is it plus?
Yes, cheaters.
Yes. Oh, thank you. Hi. Okay, my name is Sandra Losco, and I'm a resident of Worcester, and I have two children at the Chandler Magna La Familia School, and I'm here to give my humble opinion regarding the effectiveness of the Family and Community Engagement Office. I'm really thankful for this office. Just like the name says, its main function is to engage parents and the community in our children's education. Parents are of, what, a powerful voice in the life of our children, and having an office that we can count on is essential. They have made it Engagement Office. I'm really thankful for this office. Just like the name says, its main function is to engage parents and the community in our children's education. Parents are of one of powerful voice in the life of our children, and having an office that we can count on is essential. They have made it a priority to hear and allow parents' opinions to be part of the decision-making. I will give you some examples of how I personally have seen and have actually been involved with. So, I was given the opportunity to be one of my children's representative from my children's school, to be a voice in the family roundtable that they were talking about earlier. So here, parents actually get a sneak peek about policies and updates that will be soon be reached to the whole community. The superintendent's office works well with parents to hear our opinions, and I honestly feel like our voices are heard and valued. It's also a chance to network with other parents, with other wraparound coordinators, and folks from the superintendent's office also. They made it, they make it casual, they make it easy to speak up. I do feel like the office is truly engaging the families, and it's truly a bridge to break down any misconceptions of families not being able to work with top administrators. At all of their events that they have sponsored, I have felt like I have been a valued community member and a parent. All of the members have translation services, yummy ethnic food, and childcare, so that it is more welcoming to come, and we have no excuse to not come. It also makes it easy for us to be involved. And a few things that I have seen so far have been basically what they have already stated, new wraparound coordinators asking us, parents, to put our input in homework policy, or something most recent, which was the cellphone policy. Also, what was our opinion about the vision of a learner? And most recently, parents being at the Gathering for Excellence Panel, which involved many stakeholders, but parents were there as well, so I appreciated that very much. And ultimately, I feel like this office has really created a nice relationship with parents and the superintendent's office that can sometimes feel so overreached and intimidating. Thank you.
Nice job. Thank you.
Hello? Good evening. My name is Joseline Suero, and I am a parent of two children attending Worcester Public Schools. As a parent, the education of my child, of my children is the most important thing, and I always strive to participate in the school activities. I have been actively volunteering at school, trying to stay involved in my children's education. In the past year, I have had the opportunity to participate in meetings with the superintendent, which has been a great relief to me. Through this meeting, I have felt my voice heard, and I have been able to provide my perspective. I strongly believe that this meeting is crucial as they help to strengthen the relationship between family and a school. Through the Family, Community Engagement meetings, I have received a powerful message, that it's school are committed to providing a quality education and recognize that this is a journey we must embark on together as a community of families and a school staff. And now, I'm definitely ready to get involved, other families and other moms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Erin Durr. I am the principal of City View School. And from the very beginning of the school year, my team, including wraparound coordinator, school adjustment counselors, administration, and our Q team members, have been working in a coordinated effort with the Office of Family and Community Engagement. We had a new group of students arrive at the very beginning, two days before school started, of school. This group consists of Haitian families living in the hill, living down the, sorry, living in the hotel just down the hill from City View. Their needs and situation are quite unique, and we had a team assembled to help us understand the needs and to create a plan to support the students. The Office of Family and Community Engagement created connections between our school and quadrant-based team and community agencies involved with our students, as well as supported us in working with the families at the school level. We were able to understand the community services involved, the context of the group's arrival and their needs, while developing a school-based plan to engage families at City View. Support from the Office of Family and Community Engagement has enabled our City View team to form relationships with the families and engage them at a deeper level.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Belisea. I'm a parent of three Worcester Public School students, and I've been a wraparound coordinator with the district for the past nine years. I was at Woodland Academy for eight years, and just this year, I'm now at the Parent Information Center. I'm really grateful to have the opportunity to share a little bit about wraparound coordinators and how we fit into the Office of Family and Community Engagement. Wraparound coordinators were first introduced into the district in 2011, so this is long before this new office. And the role was designed to address students' non-academic barriers to learning by building support systems, high-quality partnerships, and helping schools develop trusting relationships with families. One aspect of our work is to help families access community support services. These services include access to things like shelter, food, clothing, financial assistance, medical care, immigration and legal services, English classes, childcare, after-school programs, and the list goes on. We also conduct home visits, support attendance efforts, do student check-ins, we run groups, coordinate events and fundraisers, and provide many hours of building-based support in our school buildings. In schools where families and staff often feel disconnected from each other because of immense cultural, linguistic, and socioeconomic differences, we work to foster family and community engagement. Meaningful partnerships between families, school staff, and community partners help children flourish academically and beyond. For the first decade of the role in the district, there were, on any given year, from seven to 10 schools with wraparound coordinators. In the 2022 to 23 school year, we added an additional 15 wraps, and this year, we have a wraparound coordinator at nearly every school across the district. There's just one site that's missing one. Two years ago, I represented the 10 existing wraps at the time at a school committee budget meeting when Worcester Public Schools first proposed adding an additional 15 wrap positions across the district. While we applauded the intention to add more of this critical support to our schools and felt recognized for the important work that we were doing, we urged the committee at the time to prioritize investing in district-level leadership to coordinate our work. At the time, we each reported to our individual principals and didn't have coordinated leadership, and our work was really somewhat disjointed. We argued that our work would be exponentially more impactful with leadership to provide targeted professional development and support, onboarding of new staff, evidence-based frameworks to guide our work, and a standard data collection tool to measure what we do. Although that investment didn't come right away, the eventual development of the Office of Family and Community Engagement under the direction and leadership of Casey Starr and Dr. Deborah Gonzalez has been more than I could have asked for or imagined at the time. Wraps across the district are now in constant collaboration, supporting one another, and we feel supported by our leaders. In less than one year, Casey and Deborah have already made impressive progress in providing professional development and systematizing the work that we do. From coordinating large impactful forums like the Community Roundtable discussions to checking in just personal phone calls to offer support on really difficult cases, the work coming out of the Family and Community Engagement Office is making an enormous difference in our city. I think of wraparound coordinators as the arms and legs of the Office of Family and Community Engagement. Now that we finally have a head and a body with a reach in every school, we're finally becoming more than the sum of our parts. I'm incredibly grateful to be a part of this, to be a small part of the important work that this office does in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Anne Bureau. I'm a director of Worcester Community Connections Coalition at Seven Hills Foundation, U Inc. I've been a social worker for over 30 years, 25 years in Worcester, and I'll just start by saying, my vantage point will be as a social worker. It's great to see you, Maureen. I've, the deficit of resources right now in the city of Worcester, we have never seen, I've never seen in my 30 years, and so that's going to be kind of framing my discussion tonight. When we look at different systems that exist, we often use the analogy of a three-step stool, a three-leg stool, and family and community engagement for me is definitely one of those stools. You cannot, whenever you're going to look at a school, you have to look at the environments that the kids are coming in from, and therefore their frame of, their frame of their minds as they come in. And with the hardships that our families are facing in Worcester, across the gamut, because the housing prices have skyrocketed, we so need the support of these wraparound coordinators in all the schools. The adjustment counselors have done a wonderful job, but they're not enough, and we all knew it wasn't enough, particularly right now with the rising stresses that are on the different, on our families. As I said, we're facing more of a resource crisis than I've ever seen in my 30 years of social work, and so additional support's needed. Many families are facing unbearable housing cost burdens, increased costs of food, challenges in obtaining, and stigma related to mental health and so many other deficits in their lives. The breakdown of the family shelter system has been huge in the city. We no longer have guaranteed shelter for the city of Worcester, and in the Family Resource Center, our sister program, we are having high, high-risk families not be able to access shelter and with nowhere to go. We have many more migrant families in the community that we're dealing with that we've discussed. More children reporting special needs, more food insecurity, and there's so many more layers to this, which is why this office is invaluable. It is crucial having additional staff there to support and get to know, really get to know the families and build that trust and help them to connect to the different resources. And also to head off crises before they happen, because the prevention is key. Once a family gets an eviction notice, so many of their choices go out the window. And not that reps can, the wraparound coordinators can do it all, but just providing the support, helping families navigate systems, helping them to know what their plan of action is, and just supporting them is huge. And they are also key to parent involvement, which we know is critical to children's education. We all know that. This, this cannot be fostered only by sending flyers home or by Connect Ed, by relationship building, and we know for so many of our families who have been involved with so many systems and immigrant families, they are so scared of professionals, and so that relationship building takes a while. It's interesting, so we brought a bunch of parents to meet with Dr. Monrez when she first came, came into town, and we talked to our parents. We do a lot of parent leadership development, and we talked, we asked them, what are your top priorities? And so much of it developed, dealt with the task of this office, the social, emotional needs of the families. It included communication with the schools, bullying, so many families of color felt that there was racism in the school, that their children were being directly exposed to, access to after-school programs. Those were the main items. It wasn't so much the children's education, even though that was paramount, but all those items were getting in the way of their children's educational attainment. So I wanted to share my own hand, experience with the wraparound coordinators. They, it's tremendous that they help us with situations, that they're there, it's tremendous that they're in all the schools, and they help nip situations that would previously, and no fault of any staff, but could go on much longer and be torturous to the families, and also just be such a burden to the schools because one adjustment counselor just could not do it. We had one family at a local school whose child has high-needs autism, and there was some bullying involved and some physical disability, and it was going on and on. The parent was really, really struggling, and despite the best efforts of the school, we, we brought it to Deborah and Casey, and then within a matter of a week, boom, boom, it was addressed. And the parent is now very happy that the, that this particular parent did need, the child did need another school setting. There was a headlight situation when we recently worked with City View School on, and then we worked with the adjustment, the wraparound coordinator on, and the Family Resource Center was very lucky to have that connection. Another parent was dealing with another bullying situation, and the office again stepped in right away. And it goes on and on. Input, I want to give you input from the parents. I asked them for input tonight. Greater attention to bullying. The schools are now, all the schools are putting out a survey to parents about what is impacting school environment. More forums to address, to talk about autism, which is huge for the parents, and this parent said, there's one forum after another for autism and how you navigate the special education Parents are involved, we're, the roundtables, parents being called in to participate in interviews of staff with tremendous, tremendous sense. The parents are so, we're hearing from parents who are just so pleased and feel so much more engaged. And then, I also want to give a kudo, it's one of the biggest challenges for Worcester parents in our surveys, after-school care. And so Worcester Public Schools through this department is engaging with providers to look at more ways to boost after-school care, particularly for working parents. And then as former chair, co-chair of the Haitian Task Force with May de Morales, the efforts with the immigrants that came in was fast, it was comprehensive, and it was so caring of meeting directly with those parents and trying to meet their linguistic and also just give them a welcoming environment. This is a wonderful investment. This is one of the legs of the stool. Thank you.
Thank you. We all set?
So, this leads us to, I'm sorry, I am just overwhelmed with so much wonderful comments, but this brings us to the desired state, right? Where do we want to be, where we want to go? And the desired state is simple. We have effective systems that support all families and community stakeholders to engage as partners in our scholars' education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member McCullough?
If I could just, I'd like to close it. Thank you. So first, I want to, I want to thank the team, I want to thank the, the voices from the field for coming and really sharing your truth. And when I listen, like Dr. Gonzalez, it's very heartwarming to hear such positive and trend across each stakeholder that spoke. And so I want to just remind the committee that the Family and Community Engagement Framework, this implementation, it's quickly becoming, and this office is quickly becoming the model of the three mindsets that we've been working on in Worcester Public Schools, that idea of authentic engagement, how do you engage people authentically so they feel like their voices are heard, how do you create a sense of belonging, and then how do you build and honor people's knowledge? Thanks, Mom, for sharing that. Not only have you learned, but now you're ready to take it to others, right? This is what we're looking for and the practices that we want to see in all of our schools for every person that is in Worcester Public Schools, caregivers, children, our staff, and so a great example of where we're going as a district. With that, I turn it back to you, Mayor Petty.
Thank you. Job well done. This, nice job tonight, everybody who spoke too. Much appreciated. And we'll let Ms. McCullough go first.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the presentation. First of all, I want to thank Ms. Starr and Dr. Gonzalez for being so present, because I feel like every event that I'm at for the community, you're there, one of you, both of you, and are always engaging with stakeholders. So I really think it's not just the words that you're speaking tonight, but it's the actions that you're showing in the community. So thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I'll try to be brief on this. I have been a fan of, excuse me, the wraparound coordinator position since its inception, and then the continual growth with that position, and I'm so happy that we have them in the schools, and I know that I've spoken with the superintendent and other people in administration and making sure that we continue to support those roles and making sure kind of everyone's on the same page and what the opportunities are and the services provided, because I know as we're still growing in that area, right? There's still some development going on there, so I'm excited to see where that continues to go. And this is certainly something that has just been talked about for so long, is the additional family and community engagement piece. And not only is it happening, and certainly it has been happening in different ways for a long time, but now it's in a much more cohesive fashion with this department, and I think what I love when I look at this slide is empowered caregivers, right? I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, what we need on the school end from our families is support, but we need to give them support to get that support back. So I think saying that our goal is empowered caregivers and how
I have been a fan of, excuse me, the wraparound coordinator position since its inception, and then the continual growth with that position. And I'm so happy that we have them in the schools. And I know that I've spoken with the superintendent and other people in administration, making sure that we continue to support those roles, and making sure kind of everyone's on the same page, and what the opportunities are and the services provided. Because I know as we're still growing in that area, right, there's still some development going on there. So I'm excited to see where that continues to go. And this is certainly something that has just been talked about for so long, is the additional family and community engagement piece. And not only is it happening, and certainly it has been happening in different ways for a long time, but now it's in a much more cohesive fashion with this department. And I think what I love when I look at this slide is empowered caregivers, right? I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, what we need on the school end from our families is support, but we need to give them support to get that support back. So I think saying that our goal is empowered caregivers, and how we engage with the community is just, it's huge. And, you know, I don't want to belabor, I grew up the child of an educator in the Worcester Public Schools, and I remember my mother would continually say, one of the most positive things in her building were the parent liaisons. And now we don't have that particular role, but it seems like the wraparound coordinator has encompassed a lot of what that showed as a benefit for so many years, but in a more robust way. And the other thing I love is that we now have a wrap at PIC. I sat with a staff member at PIC one day during, kind of a relationship contractual conversation we were having with EAW. They had asked school community members to go out and spend the day with different EAW members, and mine happened to be an employee at PIC. And one of the things that she had kept saying was, it would be so great if we could get a wraparound here to get things started from the ground up, before the students are even out in the schools, and how we connect people with services that way. So to really see that come to fruition is wonderful. In so many of the different guidebooks and things that we're hearing, I will just ask one question through the chair to whomever would want to answer this. With the enrollment procedures and guidebooks, I know one of the things we had talked about was that becoming accessible on our website. Is that something we will continue to see as we grow the website?
Absolutely. Through the chair, absolutely.
Okay, because I know that's been a big thing from hearing from community members, because you know, everyone's quick to go online first, right? And then when they can't find it there, it becomes kind of that panic. And I think having that information at people's fingertips even more accessible will be really wonderful. So I, again, I thank all of you. I look forward to continued work that we see from this department. And I know it ties in with our strategic plan and the superintendent's goals, and just want to continue to see how we can support the wraparound coordinators and the department. Thank you.
Anybody else? Member Mailman?
That was awesome. And I missed a couple of people speaking, but that was really impactful tonight. So thank you to all of you. I've heard a ton about these roundtables, and people just love them. And you two are absolutely, I hear your names probably weekly, maybe not, if more than that. And that's, I think, what we were after with this, with this project. I guess I have two questions. One of them is on the family academy? Can you tell me a little bit more about what that actually means to families, or to, to what we're providing for families? And then the second question I have is, to both of you, what are we missing? Like, what's, what's our next thing? What are we missing? And I know everybody is going to start this year by saying, we can't lose what we have. Mr. Allen, we get that. But we're gonna, right, we're gonna have to fight big time hard to be able to meet. So what are we missing? But life is going to go on, so we can't not think about the future after that. So two questions. The family academy, and then, so to either of you, or both of you, whoever.
So I'd like to talk a little bit about the family academy. I had a history with family academies since I worked for, many years ago, Latin Education Institute. And I, I know that because it's research-based, and I know it because it worked for Worcester, which is very important. Sometimes we read theory, and we just, you know, want to explore with theory, but when you see the theory in practice, and it actually bears, you know, the results that you really want to see, that's something that you want to replicate. I want to do it again, you know? Why reinvent the wheel? So basically, the motto for family academies is to provide an opportunity for families to learn about different topics that relate to navigating systems. In this case, would be Worcester Public School Systems. And so in doing that, eliminating all barriers that have to do with them not being able to participate. So if we have to do it in a Saturday, if we have to partner with community organizations to provide certain things, if we have to provide brokers, cultural brokers, that people feel comfortable with, and they will recruit them to come to the events, that hand-holding sometimes is very important, right? So basically, it's a way to make sure that people learn, families learn, become empowered. And they do that by eliminating all the barriers for them to participate, and also to bring experts to teach them and get them to be empowered.
And through the chair, to try to attempt the second question. I mean, that's a hard question, right? I would say generally, we need a little bit more time. I think we need more time to integrate our systems, and to really take a step back and be able to do a more in-depth kind of system approach to ensure that everything is really embedded together. We've done a lot, but there's still, we have big, we got big plans, and we just need a little bit more time, I think, to really focus on embedding these systems in the existing infrastructure, which is a pretty large system. You know, the Worcester Public Schools is not responsible for housing families. That being said, what was spoken about today from community partners and wraps is so real. And the housing crisis that we are seeing in our city is, it's, you know, I've been in housing for the past fifteen years previous to this job, and we've just never seen the type of crisis that we're having now. Because we used to have families in crisis, and we used to be able to connect them to a system that could support them while they figured out their next steps. And right now, we can no longer, you know, to have EA say no more, to say we're completely at capacity, is really trickling down to our schools and our families and our wraps in a really intensive way. And so I don't know what the answer is here, but that is something that we are really starting to, we have to revamp the way in which we provide housing support to our families through our wraps, and that's not an easy answer. And so that is a real crisis that we're in right now, that's really coming down and affecting us. And I don't know what the answer is, and I know it's not about providing it. Our school system is not here to necessarily provide housing, but we now have to look at a new system to provide housing support to families, because the system that we've had previously no longer exists, and we're not sure when that timing is going to change. Thank you both.
Thank you. Member Johnson?
Thank you, to the chair. Thank you guys for the presentation, and to all the speakers, and good seeing you again. I, I just want to just make a comment that it's good to see kind of where we are now, and kind of the work that's being done. But I just want to remind people that, like, I, this started back when we needed to hire the superintendent. And one of the things we had talked about was family engagement, and making sure we got someone that was going to get out into the community and engage families. And then that translated over to our budgeting, and adding our wrap coordinators and doing that work, and, and Dr. Superintendent Monrez having that vision to kind of put this into action. But, you know, this started a long time ago, when we started that process, and to now get to this point, to where we are, I mean, it's good to see, I'm happy to see it, and looking forward to the work moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, great job, great job tonight. Looking forward, this is a priority of the school committee, and so, and superintendent, so thank you. You make a difference, so. And next up is the standing committees. And before that, Carissa from, is it North High School? Or, no? Did I get that wrong? And I'm still representative? Do you want to introduce yourself? We missed you earlier, so sorry. I know I ran into you this week somewhere, I can't remember.
Sorry. My name is Ariana from South High.
South High, okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. McCullough.
Thank you. The Standing Committee on Finance, Operations, and Governance met on February 5th at 4:45 PM. Present were Member Johnson, Member Roy, myself, Deputy Superintendent Allen, Director of Facilities Rich Eikonen, and Assistant Director of Facilities Ryan Hacker, along with Budget Director Sarah Consalvo. The first item we took up at the meeting was GB 2-92.12, Request that the Administration provide quarterly updates regarding building maintenance to include timeframes on one work will begin and be concluded. And there was a quarter-two facilities update, as well as the view of a sample of the developing or the Worcester Public Schools capital projects dashboard that is in development. Mr. Allen introduced Mr. Eikonen, who gave a summary of facility updates that included custodial services, maintenance and trade, environmental services, summer 2023 and ongoing maintenance projects, as well as capital projects, and just high-level some of those. Ongoing maintenance projects surrounded painting, playground repairs, relocation of schools, hanging championship banners, and repairing a subterranean valve at Sullivan Middle School. Some of the capital projects included Elm Park gym renovations, bleacher and floor replacement at Burnco High, ADA-compliant ramps, as well as window replacement projects, site improvement projects, and district-wide HVAC projects, and of course, our new building of Darty High School, which is on track for the August 2024 opening. There was also discussion around some of the work that's being done as far as a project tracking dashboard that Mr. Hacker presented on. And it's really going to be something that will be very nice for people to be, go on, ideally, eventually go on the website. They'll be able to click on the project tracking dashboard. It will contain the status, the budget, the timeline, as well as milestones for significant capital, capital projects, which Mr. Hacker created in conjunction with Ms. Consalvo and the budget team. We also had a conversation around the importance of the Environmental Health and Safety Department, and we know we are trying to currently hire for that position, but there is the Assistant Director who is currently fulfilling the workload of that department. I made a motion to accept and hold this quarterly report, and on a roll call of three to zero, the motion passes. The next item was GB 3-195.2, to review the status of the FY '24 budget and make appropriate transfers as required. Mr. Allen noted that there is currently a $350,000 deficit, and the finance team is looking into ways to mitigate the deficit and find areas of potential savings. Ms. Consalvo reported on accounts with budget impacts. The accounts with projected negative balances include health insurance, out-of-district tuitions for special education students, transportation, building utilities, supplemental program salaries, and school nurse salaries. The accounts with projected balances to offset these deficits include teacher salaries, teacher substitute salaries, maintenance salary accounts, school clerical salaries, and unemployment compensation. Mr. Allen discussed that the number of students requiring out-of-district special education placement, along with the cost of the student transportation to those placements, is where we saw the biggest increase. He also noted that the Worcester Public Schools is, is in the purchase of purchasing, is in the process of purchasing an additional thirty-nine vans for special ed transportation. And by using our own vans, this will significantly reduce the cost of our contracting transportation and make a dent in cost overruns. Member Johnson clarified that the new vans Mr. Allen mentioned will help reduce those out-of-district costs, and he confirmed that although thirty-nine vans will not cover 100% of the needs, it will make a significant reduction in the need for those contracted services. I made a motion to make a transfer of $300,000 from the teacher substitute salaries, transportation OT, to transportation OT on a roll call. On a vote of three to zero, the motion passes. I made a motion to approve and hold the quarterly facilities report, and on a roll call of three to zero, the motion passes, and the meeting adjourned at 5:19 PM.
Take a roll call?
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Bernanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, next is General Business, Request that the Administration establish a School Safety Advisory Committee. Motion is to approve and file, so look forward to the committee when you get that finished. Thank you. And others in favor, opposed, so ordered. Next one is Member McCullough, to get a presentation on the morning classrooms project, including teacher and student feedback from those participating.
As it reads.
For the teaching, learning, and student success, others in favor, opposed, so ordered. Next up is the variety report on all after-school programs, funding source, and the number of students served, and office suggested alternative providers and funding models. Uh, Member Mailman?
As it reads.
Wow. Okay. Others in favor, opposed, so ordered. Variety report of October 1st, total enrollment by grade, school class size by grade, and quarter for the last five years. In the report, please indicate when the last time schools were redistributed, and if, if there are plans to do this again in the near future. Member Mailman?
Thank you. I just want to add that I think that this, directly or indirectly, this item has come up a couple of times last year. I think Member McCullough had said something, and I think Member Johnson has referred to this need. So I don't want to lose the item about redistribution, and, because I think it is something we've been thinking about, and, and will certainly have to deal with at some point. So I guess I'm also looking at the clerk through the chair, too, to make sure we don't lose this item. And I think we got the, we got the data on October 1st numbers last year around about December, and I, so this would be important if we could somehow make this a beginning of the year or end of the year report all the time. Thank you.
Send that to the Administration. Others in favor, opposed, so ordered. Next up is the variety report that includes a number of one to five teachers per school and subject, including cost per teacher per school. Uh, Member Bernanda?
As it reads.
A roll. Others in favor, opposed, so ordered. Variety report including ten years of data on the amount of funding per school for credit buyback. Member Bernanda?
So I put that on because I think it's important regarding how we change the credits for the graduation ceremony. And so there could be many more students that might participate in buyback. So I was concerned, you know, knowing we also have a budget shortfall, but we do need to provide additional buyback for students to, able to make the credit, so they're able to graduate. So that's why that item is there.
Okay, so send that to the Administration. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Variety report on the funding of CPR training, appoint CPR PD for the health and PE teachers for 23, 24 year, school year. Member Bernanda?
Yes, that actually came directly from request. For the current year, it appears that health and phys ed teachers have not received the training from the district on CPR. So I was hoping that we could fit that in this year for them, as the certification has lapsed, and was hoping there'd be funding to continue to do that this particular year.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, through the chair. So we actually did provide CPR training for staff before school started, so we didn't want to interrupt programming during the school day. All our athletic coaches are trained, our transportation staff is trained. As of now, we have 193 individuals that are trained. We're also going to offer an optional training for anyone who wants to do that on March 5th, when we have that professional development day. Our nurses are taking the lead and doing this training. So there is training going on, we're going to make sure people know about it. I would recommend that this be filed, and we'll make sure that people have the information that they need if anyone still needs to be trained.
Could I, through the chair, could I make a recommendation that the phys ed and health teachers directly receive an email, making them aware that they could participate in that training on March 5th?
Okay. Member, Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair. We will make sure that anyone who wants it can offer it. I don't want to pigeonhole only them because I'm, we have other training going on, and so I want to make that available. But yes, anyone who needs it, they will be sure to have that information.
Okay, so we'll file that and send an email out to everybody who needs the information to register. Others in favor, opposed, so ordered. Variety report on the number of schools with water filling stations, and the cost of providing water filling stations in all the schools. Member Bernanda?
Through the chair. And this is also a request from several people at several schools, sharing, you know, I, I know we've had this conversation before, too, and it's always, it is a kind of hefty cost for schools, and I know some PTOs in some schools help support that. I think their concern is that there's money, cost of money for the delivery and buying of the water, and their request was whether or not that would be a, somehow, of, once we put in the water filling stations, the money saved could then go into some account to add them eventually to all buildings.
Member Johnson?
Yeah, in regards to that, I thought we had taken this up. I, I could be wrong, I thought it was in our last meeting, but is there any way Mr. Allen could speak to the, the water bottle filling? could speak to the water bottle filling stations? Thank you.
Through the chair, to Member Johnson, correct. Through Finance and Operations, now Finance, Operations, and Governance, we've been discussing the use of the SWIG grant for water bottle stations and ESER funds for water bottle filling stations. SWIG grant was just completed, as we reported a couple of weeks ago in Finance and Operations. There were 50 units installed in 25 schools, and we're about to release the RFP for the ESER water bottle stations, and there'll be about 100 units installed in schools through those funds.
Also going to do every school? That needs it?
Every, yes. We're primarily focusing on cafeterias and gym areas first, and then other areas within the school as well.
Okay, so we can file that then also? We can file that? Thank you. Those in favor, opposed or ordered? Provide a report on the schools offering junior ROTC to include the budget, the promotion of the offering of this program. Uh, Member Biancaria?
Thank you. We've been very fortunate with our schools and our junior ROTC program. They not only support our community, but their presentation is always very impressive. I've worked with a number of the students and never have been disappointed in their participation, not only in the program that they are attending for that day, but what the other activities they do in our community. So my concern is with the budget and so on, I'm hoping that we are able to continue with this program and at some point receive information on what they have done in years past. We have had one or two of the schools attend a school committee meeting and make presentations on the activities they've had in our community, in the value that they have also seen, and we have many of the students that go on in their lives and have continued to keep in contact with the program and some of the students.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Send that, you want to speak on that? Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair. I'd actually like to recommend that this be become part of our budget conversation as it pertains to the budget portion of this, so in the budget 2025 as part of that. The, what, what we are facing or we're noting is that we're having trouble filling the position to offer J ROTC, so it's not that we don't want to, that there's a trouble in filling it at one of our schools, so, but if the question is about the budget, I'd like to recommend that we file this and we bring it back when we have the budget conversation.
And we can send it to the finance, the budget?
Right, the piece of this, I certainly agree with that, that's fine. The piece of this that I am concerned with also is, I'm assuming that we're going to continue the program, I'm going to be very positive, so I am looking to find out how we are promoting it within our schools, and I understand that we did have, and we continue to have, an issue with finding someone who is going to be able to teach this, but the present that we have in our schools, as far as staff that cover this, I would like to know how we're helping them to promote the program.
Okay, so file this and ask for a report back on how we're going to promote the program.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Those in favor, opposed or ordered? Next is, we can do these together, I guess, Ms. Biancaria and, and Member Roy, it's the same order almost, I think, but. Yeah, provide an update in the number of classroom doors without locks at Roosevelt School, Rice Square, Wakeview, West East Middle, North, and Worcester Technical High School, and timeline for those doors to be secured. And also provide a report, the actual number of locks in individual classroom doors for the schools located on District E, with the following schools to date, as noted in the school safety audit, this report needs to include timeframe when the locks will be installed in the classrooms, that currently do not have them. Member Biancaria for, or by Member Roy?
Thank you. Yes, I'm looking at District C specifically under this, and we have six schools that are included in that and were mapped out. Every school has a blueprint in this particular report that costs our taxpayers $335,000. Based on the recommendations, the budget of this dedicated to ensuring we provide the possible benefits of safety, I would like to see this reviewed, because my concern is, as we go further down the road, in that we have to plan for dollars, we also have to plan on what we're doing for a timeframe to accomplish what we have looked at under our safety audit, and this is a large piece of it. I am concerned, and I've heard from parents, every day you pick up the paper, you turn on the news, and unfortunately, something has happened. So when we talk about safety, that is a small portion of what can actually save a life, and I'm hoping that when we look at this list, it's a priority list, and we're able to at least get some of this work done sooner than later, and that's why I brought it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to pretty much reiterate what my colleague Biancaria just said. I filed this for two reasons. One, of course, is safety. In the event of an intruder, which we hope never ever happens entering any school, meaning ill will or malice, it is important that each classroom and office can be locked down with the proper door locks. It would give a lot of parents, guardians, grandparents, students, our precious students, teachers, and faculty a sense of, you know, that they have control to take care of themselves. And I also filed it under the veil of transparency to require the information of the cost of these locks and the specific timeframe that they will be installed, and safety is very important for our children, as we all know in this room, and I'd like to see this implemented in a timely fashion.
Thank you. Member, Madam Superintendent, Member John? Member Johnson, you want to speak first, or what, the superintendent?
Please, to the chair, so my guess is someone's going to, you're going to speak to this, or Mr. Allen will speak to this? I mean, in the safety audit, it was clear that this is a priority. I think we had already prioritized money to kind of deal with, dealing with the locks, because I think that was the first priority that we had to deal with, and I 100% sure that it encompasses every school that needs locks or whatever, not just, no, every school, so I think we just need to focus on the school district in totality, because there's numerous middle schools, elementary schools that are going to receive this work. So can we get a report on kind of where we're at with that and the timeframe around this? Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair. So just, just to do a little bit of backup, when I was selected to be the superintendent in Worcester, and I was still living in California, there was an event that happened, I'm going to say it was in early June, because I remember calling Mr. Allen and saying, oh my goodness, what do we do for safety in Worcester, and when's the last time we've had an audit of our total physical safety? And it had been a very long time, and so that's what got us to where we are today, where, and I say that because I think it's really important that the new committee members know that safety is a priority for all of us, and, and so the audit took a really long time, because they looked at lots of different parts of physical safety, talking with people, not just what, what protocols do we have, but what's in place, and then what does it look like when, in the terms of locks and ingress and regress at the schools, and I'm, you know, and we've got close to 50 different schools between schools and programs. So takes us to then when we brought that safety plan or the audit to the committee in November, and as part of that, well, actually, prior to bringing the results, we knew that the, there was a lot of work to be done, and so in the previous budget, which is what Member Johnson was speaking about, the committee approved a substantial amount of funds from the ESER funds to start to implement what's in the safety plan. And the priority that we put in place specifically for this school year, which is one of my goals that you will evaluate me on at the end of this year, is that every classroom interior, every interior door will have working locks. That's 100% that we're saying will be ready before school starts. We can come back with where, where we are with the actual implementation of that, but that is something that this committee has already said is a priority, we have already funded it, and I believe in November was when Mr. Allen shared how we worked with the fire department and some other local officials to help us determine what's the best lock to use in this situation, and that's what we were moving forward with. So just to assure our new committee members, our community, that we are doing this for all of our schools, it will be done by the end of the school year, you will evaluate me on that completion, and we're happy to come back with what we have completed. What I would recommend, because the safety audit is in Finance, Operation, and Governance, is that that update be provided through that setting, and then that can come to the larger committee.
Member Biancaria?
Thank you. Superintendent, just to, I did attend the November meeting, and the presentation included parts of what that safety audit was. I'd like to make a recommendation that we receive, as school committee members, the entirety of this safety audit, so then we can discuss it in executive session. I realize that there are some components that certainly, unfortunately, you don't want to have discussed in public, but I would appreciate receiving and being able to have the opportunity to review, review the entire report and then be able to discuss it in the executive session, so we are then having a full front look at what is occurring, and what, what needs to be done, and what, what the list of how we are looking at our schools, because this is, we've had other safety audits, and the other safety audits cherry picked schools. This particular audit included every school and provided a blueprint, but we need to have some discussion, and I clearly, as I said, understand that we don't want to have it on the floor, however, we can have it in executive session.
We can issue that in executive session and go over it in detail.
I'm sorry?
We can go over that in detail in executive session.
That would be terrific, thank you.
Through the chair, just, just procedurally, I think we need to take a vote on that? I think there's, there needs to be a vote on the floor for that, so just procedurally.
No, we've done that in the past, so.
Yes.
But I would think we're going to issue the report to anybody, we just have a executive session on it. Yeah, it's a motion to go to executive session.
So that's what I'm, I'm saying, so if there's a motion on the floor, then there's a vote for, for the committee.
Yep. Okay. Roll call. Member Mailman? I'll be sized that.
Are we, so I have something else I'd like to put on the table, okay. I'd actually like to make a motion to file both of these items for two levels. One, because the information was just to provide it to the whole committee. We have a plan, it was provided. It is hard, as new school committee people, to not know what was on November's report, although it was through the chair, just made clear that at least one of the members was here to listen to the report. I clearly remember door locks were going to be satisfied. I believe that there's a question about what is, what can be held in executive committee, so I guess I would want an opinion on that before we go forward, and I don't know enough to give, maybe Mr. Allen might have that information, I don't know. The other thing that I would say is, we've got to come to grips with this district business, because through the chair, in my training, the training was that districts, we are not representing particular sections of the city, particular schools, particular principals, whatever the case may be. We are here as a body to represent the whole. So what I would ask you, Chair, to please clarify for all the members, if we need to do that through MASC, through the clerk, I'm cool with that, but last week we had items that were about particular parking issues at particular schools. Member McCullough artfully said, we're going to look at all of them. We're here tonight talking about door locks on particular schools for particular districts, which again, we've already prioritized. So I, I think there's two things at the table, the security report, and the other thing is, is this what we're going to listen to every meeting? So I guess that's not an item, but that's just, I guess it is an item. We need to, I'd like further training on that. I'd, what are our jobs? Our jobs are not specific items for district things, and again, this is two weeks in a row, which we've listened to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think Superintendent said she was going to provide an update where we are in the process, right?
We will do that through F O H.
Yeah, we agree with that, and you can file the items, and we'll get an update. Then we've asked for a motion to go to executive session, and the third thing is regarding, we can discuss items that are not made public in executive session on this, on the, on this report. So we can do that, and as long as it meets the definition of executive session.
And you'll, you'll clarify that.
Yep. We'll get a clarification on that. Okay.
And, and the district issue, Chair?
District issue, this is going to be an issue that we're going, I don't know, I'm an expert in this, but this is going to be an issue where every school committee who has district councils, district school members is going to have to grapple with. You have district school members who represent districts, they're going to have to put something on their school that, that maybe should, maybe the issue should be, if it does, if it's not a school-wide issue, in a particular school, that should be okay to do. But where, it is a school-wide issue, we should be smart enough to make it a school-wide representation.
Yep, and other cities have certainly grappled with this before, and, and clearly the, the instruction back to us is that we are here as a whole body, so if it's specific, I'm with you. Okay, thank you.
So that's what it's going to have to use, how common sense as we go forward, because people do get phone calls, and this is how it was set up, like district city council and at live city council, so district council, district school members are going to put items on their particular school. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, so, so then first of all, we're going to file these items, we're going to get an update as, as we agreed to by the superintendent on the safety of the school locks. Where we are in the process, and this will be done before June 30th, as part of the evaluation process, right? So that's one. All those in favor, opposed or ordered? Number two, we have a motion to go into executive session to discuss this matter in private? Roll call.
Member Alvarez? Can you clarify that for me?
So basically, executive session is something where the public, we don't want to give something, it's a private matter, in the sense that it's not open to public discussion. So the stuff in that safety report that's just pertaining to safety of particular schools, that you won't, you won't know, the public should not know the issues involved in those schools, and so we're going to discuss that privately, not in public.
And what, if the answer is no, what, what does that?
I guess it's no, we don't have no discussion, you won't know what's in the report.
I'm just a little confused, my apologies.
No, it's okay, this is the first time, it's confusing, so. No, it's basically, if you, if you want to listen to the report in executive session, you would vote yes, if you don't know what, if you don't want to listen to the report in executive session, you would vote no.
No.
The, what was the motion?
Through the chair, my understanding of the motion is to receive a copy of the full report in executive.
I clarified that, I said we're not going to receive a copy.
Okay, so this would be a, a, I want to make sure, this is a conversation in executive, not, not the full copy of the report.
We go over the report in executive session.
So a full copy? That's where there's, I just want to keep the district safe, and I don't- That's where there's, I just want to keep the district safe, and I don't want something that can become a public records request.
It's not going to be-
Right, but if it's an executive session, it's not a public records request.
It, it, we report out on minutes at some point on the, um, executive session, so at some point it does.
It does and it doesn't. It does in the sense if it was, the matter's been closed, it goes, you report out, you are correct, but if there's stuff in that report that can never be issued, it's, it's just, you don't, you don't release it.
As long as we can keep the, the-
Yeah.
That's, that's my biggest concern, thank you.
Okay. Um, Member McCullough?
Thank you, and I apologize, I just want to ask two clarifying questions before taking this vote as well. I want to clarify that it is a conversation in executive session.
Correct.
And that we are going to ensure that it meets the parameters of open meeting law for, I mean, executive session.
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
Member Mailman?
And confirm that we are, if, if this vote goes forward, that we are not having nine copies of paper that are going to re, stay with the people.
No, it stays in the executive session.
Right, so no paper goes out of the room with members, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Roll call.
Member Alvarez? No. Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Bernanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
No.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Uh, yes. Okay. Okay, so that brings us to the end of the meeting, we can adjourn. Those in favor, opposed or ordered?